The garbage boy.
The news guy, the, what do they call it? The person that puts the mail in the slot?
The mail clerk.
The mail clerk.
Please rise to the invocation by Mayor J. Longstreet, Pastor.
Good evening. Would you bow with me forward in prayer? Lord, it's a privilege for us to gather together in this place as servants seeking to bring about a better community. I'm thankful, Lord, for these men and women who invest themselves tirelessly to make our community a better place and a safer place. And, Lord, in this week, we especially think of the police officers that spend hours and hours protecting us and serving us. Lord, we recognize that they place themselves in harm's way over and over again on a daily basis, and so whatever compensation we can offer to them is never enough. So I pray that they would receive our love and our care for them. Remind us, God, as a community, that we are far much better together than we ever could be apart, that none of us have all the good ideas. That's why we need one another, because we believe by discussing and debating together that a greater Hickory can come about. We pray for the least of those in our community who have needs tonight. We pray, God, for prayer concerns that each one of us have in our hearts, those that are spoken and those that are unspoken. Thank you, God, for hearing and receiving these. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that's the first time, Pastor, that the invocation has been presented to me as the first time.
You try to do it.
Gee, soon you gotta bring it up to your.
Captain, spare everyone except on behalf of the police department when picture signs comes off like my own.
Here's a shocker.
How do we know that? You know, this is a time for us to reflect on the sake of our law. It's a difficult job, and they want to make swift, solid decisions. And the idea is that everyone stays safe. And I have a comment here, and I have said, and I believe this strongly, that officer, first and foremost, needs to claim to be home with his or her family when he should be there. Well, after approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving their duty in the United States, whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the birth of reported death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Earl Lane Maynor of Hickory City, August 9th, 1977. Whereas the names of these dedicated public service are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Whereas 273 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 117 officers killed in 2014 and 156 officers killed in previous years. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staffed. What, or how should we fly them at half-staffed? Now, therefore, I will have Hickory City Council, I proclaim May the 10th and 16th, as Police Week in the City of Hickory, and ask that all our citizens publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and across the nation. Where are we, pictures, Steve?
Okay. I just want to say thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Today, a 40th law enforcement officer lost his life in Long Island, New York, in Pennsylvania. And yesterday, if you watched the news, in Garland, Texas, you saw a patrol officer in front of two armed pairs with fully automatic machine guns. This job's challenging, and if you've seen the news lately, you can see the challenges are mounting every day outside of the city. And if you see an officer out in the community, please walk up and give some words of encouragement. Tell him we appreciate the job they do, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Go on, Jack. Council, y'all get in here clear. Come on, man. This is our police force. Another reason we like to do this is it's not fair, but the fire department gets those high ratings.
Oh, man. Oh, kill him.
Stand over here.
And you know, it's really great that a 40th law enforcement officer, 1977, that it's great that he has 28 years of law enforcement. Oh, okay. And building safety month? Who will be receiving this? Okay.
Bobby Baker.
Yes, the elements of the hand of God, and the other things involved in permitting, inspecting, code enforcement, have played a major role in our great public safety record over the past several decades. Whereas our confidence that our structures are safe and sound is achieved through the devotion of the guardians, the enforcement officers, the fire prevention and inspection officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others. Whereas these guardians use a government consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect the Americans. Whereas the international codes, the most highly adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most U.S. citizens, these modern building codes also include safeguards to protect from hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remain the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety. Whereas Resilient Community Star Building Codes is themed for Building Safety Month 2015, to encourage all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety, and conservation. Whereas each year, in accordance with Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustain building home and in the community. Now, therefore, I will have Hickory City Council, I do hereby declare the month of May as Building Safety Month in the City of Hickory. Whoever wrote that needs to take a lesson in writing. Okay. That was not Mrs. Miller, by the way. She just does what somebody asks her to do. We have persons wishing to speak? We have Mr. Larry Pope.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crone. I am here for one reason, and that is, right now, there is a House bill before our North Carolina legislators, which is House Bill 193, which is being considered for passage of asking each law enforcement department in the state of North Carolina to form a Citizens Review Board that would look into any type of violation of a citizen's right when it comes to something that a police officer is accused of doing wrong. I can personally say to you, in all honesty, that I have not found a more honest, respectable, and willing individual than Chief Atkins to listen to citizens when they come to him, as I have gone to him several times on instances that have been brought to my attention by other citizens, i.e. the selling of the iron and copper from the two swimming pools that were demolished. A citizen came to me and told me about it. I went to Chief Atkins, told him about it, and he had one of his officers to investigate it and found that what he had been told was true. There was also times when he came to me and said, Larry, we need to talk because I'm in between a rock and a hard place, and those may not have been his words, but there is some concern about some of your presentations before Hickory City Council, and I will tell you that if I'm told to arrest you, I have no choice but to arrest you. And I said, well, chief, I don't want you to do anything other than what you're told to do by the folk who have control of your position as the chief of police. And there's one thing that you know about me, I've gone to jail before, and I will go any time when I'm standing up and speaking openly and honestly about my feelings and the things that I know the citizens are not getting a fair shake about. So I would ask you, as our city council, to do a letter of support, a formulation of a Citizens Review Board, which has been asked for before in the past of you, and nothing was ever done about it, and now is in the legislators' hands, and if they mandate that that's done, let's be on the same page. Let's continue to work together for what's in the best interest, best protection of the citizens within our city. Thank you.
Well, the only point that I would like to make here is that I don't believe any member of this council has ever said that they might ask the chief to arrest Mr. Pope or anybody else in the City of Hickory. That's not appropriate for us, and we would not do so.
Mayor, that's not what I said. I was forewarned that if I continued some of the disagreements that I had with city council, when you, Mayor, and Mr. Layle would always call me out of order because you didn't want to hear what I had to say, and you put the chief in a position that if I had not sat down at that particular time, you could have had me arrested. I know that. But like I told you before, and I told Mr. Layle, going to jail doesn't frighten me. You gotta feed me, you gotta give me my medication, and you gotta give me a place to lay down, and I will go to jail any day of the week if it means going to jail approval warrant.
Well, I don't want to get into an argument, but at this point, you have used your time now twice, and I'm gonna just repeat again.
But every time I get up and say something, you wanna wait and make comments when normally you don't make comments at the end of a presentation. But you gotta do what you wanna do, and what I'm telling you is, I'm gonna do what I wanna do.
We have never suggested that someone at this table would ask that Mr. Pope be arrested. If he's arrested, it'll be something between him and our law enforcement officers.
And I will respect Chief Atkins if he ever needs to arrest me.
I don't know that we need to take any action at all on this. I don't have any desire to see us appoint a commission or a group or ask the manager to come back to us with respect to this item.
Actually, it says that this bill allows, but does not require, cities to establish a meeting.
You know, I would be very surprised that if this bill would pass.
No.
But if it did pass.
It did make the crossover.
It did make the crossover.
So can be considered a session.
Well, okay. The point I'm making is, we don't need to do anything, right?
Right.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 21st?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Seaver made that motion, Ms. Patton seconded. All members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Zagoroli. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be moved from the consent agenda?
I'd ask item C be removed from the consent agenda.
Item C is, we don't need to make a motion. Do we have a motion to approve without item C?
We make, we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Layle?
Yeah, the reason I pulled this off, I guess, was because it looks like it's a big, big project. This is the design, $61,000 in design for 3,000 millennial feet of sewer outfall. And I read through it, and it said it was because it had been damaged by debris that was placed on it. So I guess I'm curious as to why are we replacing the whole outfall line and not just the portion that was damaged by debris? Yeah, that's the question.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Kevin Greer, Assistant Public Services Director, to come to podium. He can discuss that and any other questions council has on that.
Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening. To answer the question, the line itself is actually about 5,000 feet. The difficulty we have is that there's debris on the line and where it's at. So this outfall actually is the section on South Gate. If you go from Harvest Bible Church down to pretty much 321 and 70, there's been a lot of field placed in there over the years, and it's really steep and rugged terrain. There's about 3,000 foot of it that really is impacted by debris and field and just over the years, stuff that's been put in there. And it's gonna be a really difficult line to replace only because where it's at, how hard it is to get to it, and honestly, how steep it is to get down to the line itself. The project does include design and construction admin services, so there is a portion of part-time inspections as well as design, which equates to the 61,000.
All right, but it'll end up being probably a half million dollar project, I'm guessing.
476 is the engineer's estimate right now, 476,000.
So do we have, so I know the area that you're talking about, and people have probably gone in there and dumped, I'm guessing. I assume somebody hadn't actually graded on the line and damaged it, but do we, I mean, so how do we prevent that, I guess, if we replace it in place? Are we still gonna have the problem?
Actually, we can't replace it in place. We're looking at switching over, at least in one section, to some property that the city has on the other side of the creek, only because what's in there is just asphalt bricks, stumps. I mean, it's just years and years and years of stuff that's in there. We can't go back in that same area only because, one, the expense, it would double in expense to dig down to replace in that exact same area. It's much cheaper for us to flip sides of the creek and actually get away from that debris that's in there.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. Thanks for clarifying that. All right, I'd move approval of item C.
Second.
Motion by Layle, second by Meisner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under new business, so we have one public hearing this evening, and I'll ask the city's community development manager, Mr. Davely, and Eddie, to come to the podium and present the community development block grant consolidated plan.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2015 to 2019 consolidated plan for the city's housing and community development activities, along with our action plan for next year. The way our funding for community development block grant that comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the way that works is every five years, we update our plan for our housing and community development needs, and then every year, we adopt an action plan that helps to implement and satisfy some of those needs. Basically, every five years, we will look at our needs for housing issues, public infrastructure, facilities, public services, and all of those, all of those different types of items. The city is also part of the Uniform Home Consortium. They are preparing the kind of overarching plan for the region based, they're conducting a market analysis and a needs assessment that I've talked with Rick Oxford over at the Western Piedmont Council of Governments about. Our plan, though, is only focused on our specific CDBG allocation, the plan for the home funds of which we receive. The benefit of that, we don't administer any of those funds. That will be approved separately. The City of Lenore is the coordinator, or the coordinating jurisdiction for that group. The consolidated plan is a roadmap, basically, that will let us determine what our needs are for the next five years and then develop an action plan to implement that vision. The process is relatively simple process. It's fairly prescribed by HUD as to what we need to do. We held two neighborhood meetings in January and February during the kind of plan development process, and we also had extensive conversations with a variety of nonprofit organizations throughout the community to determine what their needs are, what they viewed were some of the larger issues in the community, and we also had discussions with staff, especially public services and parks and recreation staff, to determine facility needs in low-to-moderating income neighborhoods over the next few years. These two meetings and a lot of the demographic data that is contained within HUD's web template that we need to use now, this is our, this is actually our first time going through this web template. It was actually a pretty helpful process. You can see in your packet, they basically put the whole template together, and we kind of fill in the blanks, and they have a lot of the data already filled in for us. They have a mapping software program that we, that's entirely web-based, that we're able to use to add any layers and create GIS-based maps as we see fit to help illustrate some of the issues in the plan. The plan identified 10 high priority needs, and those are shown on this slide. Among them, preservation of the city's housing stock, infrastructure improvements, improvements to parks and recreation facilities, and especially in low-to-moderating income neighborhoods, because that's where we can really, that's where we're able to spend the community development block grant dollars. That's generally the area to the south of the railroad tracks and Highway 70, and also the Highland area in northeast Hickory. Increased homeownership, demand for increasing or maintaining, at the very least, our first time home buyer program, and working with Habitat to continue helping first time home buyers achieve the dream of homeownership. Services for homeless individuals, a lot of our, I work with our local continuum of care and attend those meetings, and there's a lot of need in the community for increased or better coordinated services for our homeless population. Services for persons with HIV and AIDS. As you probably know, we funded Alpha for, I'm not exactly sure how long, but since I've been involved with the city, we've provided funding for them to help with a case manager position, to help them serve the cities and the entire region's population with HIV and AIDS. Youth services, there's, there was an identified need for programs for after-school for youth, also discussions about other additional programs for at-risk youth than those in the juvenile justice system. Micro enterprise assistants. In speaking with the Business Development Committee and CBCC, Small Business Center, and some other folks, they're kind of, they described a need for wanting to help provide some additional assistance for some of the smaller, smaller businesses. And under HUD's definition, micro enterprises are defined as businesses that have less than five employees, and the owner is one of those five employees. So we're talking relatively small businesses, but, you know, in addition to a lot of our other assistance programs, there's really not anything that addresses those really kind of really tiny businesses that help a lot of different folks create jobs in the community. Removal of dilapidated structures and additionally, fair housing outreach and education are also identified during the process. Just to give an idea of some of the things that we're doing this year, since I don't really get a chance to describe that to you too often, one of the, our big project this year is Optimus Park. They're doing a walking trail connection to the Glen at Green Park, the Habitat subdivision, and also a walking trail that will help kind of connect. It will, it will just about create a loop that goes all the way from the park down through the Green Park subdivision, and then there is a little break in the sidewalk along Fifth Avenue, but that's not a particularly busy street, so hopefully folks can walk that to Seventh and then back around to the, to the park. Improving that sidewalk in the future is probably something that we'll look at to try to close that gap. Ridgeview Library, we're working with Habitat to complete the improvements to the Ridgeview Library. We provided a grant slash loan to Interfaith, and I'm working with them and Habitat to partner on getting the final interior repairs and rehabilitation done to that. There, it's, actually, it's looking pretty good. The new subfloor is down, the new bathroom is framed out, and the new office is framed out as well, so they're, they're making some progress over there. We're kind of trying to get some bids in from subcontractors now to do the plumbing, the mechanical, and the electrical. That's really the, the big things that we're waiting on. We're hoping, though, to have that, that open for the public and for the community to use by the end of the summer. In addition, street resurfacing, that was, I believe, last year was the kind of year we started doing a little bit of kind of an above and beyond street resurfacing in our low-to-moderating income neighborhoods. This past year, there was a, we resurfaced Seventh Avenue between Lenore Ryan Boulevard and Kiwanis Park, and Second Street Southwest in the Ridgeview neighborhood between, I believe, Eighth Avenue Drive and Tenth Avenue Drive Southwest, and also Eighth Street Southwest in the Green Park neighborhood from Seventh Avenue down to Highway 70. So those are kind of our larger projects that we've dealt with this year. In addition, continuing our first time home buyer program, housing rehabilitation, and also support for Habitat for Humanity and our support for our other public service nonprofit organizations. The 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan, basically the consolidated plan that you have in front of you, that provides- of you, that provides the roadmap for the next five years, and then each year, we're going to adopt a separate action plan that provides the kind of implementation for that vision. The city this year is going to have a grant from the Housing and Urban Development for $300,041 in its entitlement CDBG allocation. We're budgeting approximately $165,000 in program income from the repayment of loans, sales of property, and all those other things that we've done over the years related to the housing rehabilitation program and other loans that we have given to nonprofit organizations. So the total budget is $465,041. This chart gives and outlines all of the 12 projects that we have planned for the 2015-2016 program year. This budget and the consolidated plan were both reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee at their April meeting, and they recommended approval. The housing rehab and purchase program, that's a little bit lower. We've, as, we've talked, I think, once or twice in the past year or two about kind of a slowdown in rehabilitation, in demand for our rehabilitation program for the loans, due to some issues with lack of equity in homes and things like that. So we have some money carrying over. There's still plenty of money. We don't anticipate saying no to anyone or running out of funds anytime soon, but we're just budgeting a little bit less this year because we have some funds left over from, in the current year's budget. Optimus Park, I'll get to the, basically, we're looking at phase two, which would include rehabilitation of the existing kind of storage room and restroom facility into a community room, and also conversion of the tennis court there into at least two pickleball courts. Then continued support for public infrastructure improvements, that'll include some sidewalk and curb and gutter, as well as street resurfacing needs and any other infrastructure needs in low to moderate income communities that may arise over the next year. Continued support for the down payment assistance loan program, support for micro enterprise assistance, that is a program, we'll be developing that in conjunction with the Business Development Committee and the Citizens Advisory Committee to determine exactly how that program is going to look if it's approved. Habitat for Humanity, support for their rehabilitation of some of their houses, because a lot of their houses now, they've been building houses for over 20 years in the community, and some of their things are starting to have a little age on them, be in need of some new roofs, new heat systems and things like that, and try to help provide them some assistance to help their homeowners out. Then the additional, the public service nonprofits, City of Refuge After School Program, they provide after-school care three days per week to about 22 students. They're located in the Ridge View community, but they serve students from basically all schools, all schools in Hickory. $15,000 in support for Alpha to provide, again, case manager, support for a case manager position, support for the Hickory Soup Kitchen for their operations. Exodus Homes, that would be, like we've funded in the past, an employment and transportation coordinator to help their residents get from, get to their jo, to and from their jobs, and also to help them obtain jobs. Administration, that number is a little lower than in past years. We have, we have some funds remaining from the current year's budget that will, that will carry over and be used to administer the program. Generally, we spend between $55,000 and $60,000 per fiscal year on administration. And then fair housing activities, April, we just finished up fair housing month, and generally, the, where we spend our money for fair housing is generally advertisements in both the Spanish-language newspapers and the Hickory Daily Record to help raise awareness about folks' fair housing rights and give them the opportunity to exercise those as they, as they need to. With that, just a couple of additional highlights, five local nonprofits will be supported. We'll continue to fund resurfacing and sidewalk projects, and also phase two for Optimus Park. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How many pickleball courts could you get out of one tennis court?
Between two and three, I believe. I would defer to four. Okay, never lie, I'm sorry.
It's the commissioner.
Yeah.
The pickleball commissioner.
I didn't have a question, but I do have a comment. I spend a lot of time talking to the folks in Green Park and in Westwatch, and they are extremely excited and feel like the Optimus Park is right on track. They feel like that it's been neglected for a while, but now it's their time, and they're extremely excited about the renovations and about the future for that area right there. So it's, I commend you for that. It's a good job.
Sure, we're excited about it.
They had actually, prior to all of this, started trying to raise their own money, and they had a little bit raised, and actually, at one of the last meetings I went to, they decided to divert that money somewhere else because the city and everybody had taken on this project. So they appreciate it.
I'm going to prepare the public hearing to be open in a minute, and at that time, we will ask fif, we will allow 15 minutes for those who would like to speak against it, an equal amount for those who would like to speak for it, and then five minutes each for rebuttal and show rebuttal if needed. With that, I'd turn the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, and Attorney Crone. I have spoken to this council in the past three years about some of the nonprofit organizations that you fund, year after year after year. And the one that I'm talking about in particular is the only one that's being recommended to you that I am speaking against, and that's Exodus Homes. Exodus Homes has been receiving community block grant funds for 15 years. They have now reduced the number of residents within their program. They have lost funding from the United Way. They lost funding from Western Piedmont Council of Governments because of misuse of those funds. They applied for them for one thing and used them for something else. So I know for a fact, because I talked to the person, I wrote them a letter and said, "You can no longer apply for rehab money from us because of what you did with what you got." I know that there are other programs in this city, such as Hope Harbor, that is a mainly a woman's program that is for folk who are in recovery and others, and I think they are doing an excellent job at what they do and what they provide to the residents that they have within their program. If they have not applied for any funding through community block grant funds, then I think that our city workers need to say to them, "We would like to see you apply for some funding." Give them an opportunity, because I know that the majority of the public meetings that are held for these groups to come before the city to request funding, most of the time Exodus doesn't even come. They submit a request, is automatically approved by you because they went and helped the city to get the All-American status two or three years ago. I feel like that, again, what the city council has done is make sure that certain groups who are in the position to be a rubber stamp for what you're trying to do or get, then you reward them year after year after year after year with their other groups doing a better job and doing equal to, if not more than, what Exodus does. I know for a fact that the car wash out on 127 North that hired a lot of their residents, fired them because they found out that Exodus was taking the tips that the workers were receiving because of the fine job that they were doing on their customers' cars, and they refused to utilize any more of those residents because the money that they had worked for was being taken away from them by the administrator and the assistant administrator in that program. So I will say to you, I want to go on record as saying it's time to quit bottle feeding that organization and let them grow up on their own, which they should be able to do after you giving them support for 15 years solid. It's time to stop. So I will say to you, you need to change and not give this year to that organization. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this proposal? We have signed up to speak for it. Martha Ganna.
Hello, mayors, members of the council. I am Martha Ganna. I'm the Chief Financial and Operating Officer at Alpha. We provide medical case management services for people that are HIV-positive. In 2014, we served 184 unduplicated clients with things like medical transportation, getting back and forth to medical appointments. We have a food pantry where we provide food for them, providing over 33,000 meals. We provide short-term rent and utility assistance to keep them in housing. We also have a TBRA program, which is a long-term housing assistance, and we currently have 10 people in that program. And we're very, very appreciative of the funding that we've received in the past for this grant from the Community Development Block Grant, and I would like to recommend that you approve this grant moving forward. Having stable housing for our clients and the ability to keep them in a situation where they're not worrying about where they're going to sleep at night helps us to help them stay into medical care. It provides much healthier outcomes in the end as far as how they take care of themselves. It all ties in together and is a very important part of the process. Thank you.
And Angela Hurd, City of Refuge.
Mayor and City of, City, the council members and Attorney Crone and Mr. Berry, I am with the City of Refuge. I am here again. We have an after-school program that we meet in the Ridge View community. We have about 21 children right now, helping them, and we start in mid-September and go through the majority of the school year, but very pleased with some of the things that they're doing. Our children have won over 40 awards so far in reading and bringing up grade awards, A, B honor roll, A honor roll, B honor roll. Very impressed with what they're doing. You know, we're kind of taking them by the hand and trying to be that bridge between the parent and the school to kind of encourage the child to go on. I just found out last week, and I haven't got the article, but one of our former students won the award for League of Extraordinary Men, I believe that's what it is, at Hickory High. And his mother talked with me this morning, and she was just so thankful for the after-school program, because he was with us for about three or four years, and we helped him in his reading and his math and his behavior as well. And she said that he scored on his SAT scores the top 28% in North Carolina, so we were very pleased with that as well. So those are measured results. I've had another student that is an A student, one of our former students, and she was Student of the Month at Northview as well. So I can't get to everyone, but we're trying to celebrate all the accomplishments. Our program is not award-based, but that lets us know that what we're doing is making a difference. And so we're hoping that will encourage them and give them a strong foundation. So I do appreciate the funds that have been given to us, and we ask that you continue to support us so we can help these leaders, help these men and women be leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Mr. Pope, would you like to speak in rebuttal?
No, sir.
With that, I'd prepare the public hearing closed. With this being a public hearing, if we approve this, would it have to be approved exactly the way it was presented?
No. I hope you all can make adjustments and changes to it.
Well, I'm just going to speak for myself. I'd kind of like to have Exodus Homes come in and explain the allegations, their side of the allegations of Mr. Pope, maybe.
That'd be fine. Just, so what you, so you're familiar with what you're approving is your consolidated plan, which we send on to HUD. There's about three steps in this process, Mr. Leonetti, and this is the highest level process, then you go back and appropriate the funds. Am I correct about that?
Yes, sir. We will, if the, we approve the plan, then it will be submitted to HUD, and then after that approval, we will approve subrecipient agreements with each of the nonprofit organizations.
So if city council chose to make any changes to this plan, they could reflect that, send, resubmit it to HUD, or you tell me how that, how would that process work?
Yes, we, the plan will need to be submitted to HUD by the May 15 deadline. However, if if council wishes, we could, if there's a change in that, in the funding, we would, we could do an amendment to the plan. If there is an added activity or a subtracted activity, we would just have to do a public hearing, and we'll do that that way.
In future meetings, I think it would be beneficial to have someone from each organization here to answer any questions. I think we've gone through that, that if there are questions and there's no one there to answer, it delays the process.
They go through that process with the Citizens Advisory Committee, is that correct? Do they each come in and make a presentation about what they do, or have they gotten out of that?
They, they don't necessarily, generally, they don't speak directly to the Citizens Advisory Committee, but they submit applications each year, and then the committee reviews those. And I did let the, all the organizations know that the meeting was happening tonight.
So should we approve the plan?
Yeah, I'd suggest you approve the plan, and we could certainly extend the invitation to all of the funding agents to come at your next meeting or subsequent meeting and answer your questions, talk about what they do, the services they provide, and then you all could decide if you wanted to continue with this plan or make amendments. Do it. Would that work?
When's it due?
May 15th, so it's before your next council meeting.
This doesn't hinder that, correct?
I'd move, you're going to move approval? I'd move approval of the plan.
Motion by Mr. Lael, second by Mr. Meisner, to approve the plan. All in favor say aye. All opposed no. That's unanimous. I would ask that we have Exodus respond to Mr. Pope's allegations.
I would prefer we not put it in that context. Let's say you ask Exodus to come in as a funding, potential funding recipient, present their programs and how they use the funds to city council.
I agree. I'm sure you're not going to argue with that.
And we have an understanding what that sub, what that subrecipient funding agreement looks like. In other words, you know, there are certain guidelines that organizations have to meet to receive grants from the federal government and, of course, to receive grants from us, and that we understand. That's, or maybe a little review on that would be helpful, too.
Sure.
Okay. So we're not making a motion, we're just going to ask.
Yeah, you're just directing us to do that, and we'll do that.
Okay. Okay, code enforcement uptick, please.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask, no, on the, on the motion.
Yeah, we voted, we voted.
Yeah, we voted, is unanimous. Yeah, we voted, is unanimous.
I'll ask Code Enforcement Supervisor, Mr. Bobby Baker, to come to the podium and give council an update on the activities of his division.
Mayor Wright, council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the annual Code Enforcement report. Since we did not make a presentation for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen year, and we're currently in the next fiscal year, but it's not complete, this report will combine the information inclusive, inclusive of both timeframes. Code enforcement will complete seven years of service as of July first of this year. In that seven years, code enforcement has evolved into a vital revitalization tool as well as the regulatory entity that it was originally envisioned to be. Also during those seven years, we have noticed the role of code enforcement is perceived very differently by different groups throughout the city. I believe that management and council are more aware of the demolition and property revitalization and the subsequent impact that it has. In seven years, code enforcement has demolished two hundred and twenty-nine structures. That is one demolition every nine calendar days for that period. In the fiscal year alone, this fiscal year, the revitalization aspect translates into twenty-nine demolitions consisting of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet at a cost of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, not one dime paid by the taxpayer of the City of Hickory. The residents of the City of Hickory mainly see code enforcement as a tool to abate nuisance, junk vehicles, and minimum housing issues. Certain city departments utilize code enforcement to help resolve issues interfering with their operations, which of course we're glad to do. Many relate code enforcement to be the complaint department for issues that they do not know where to go to find help. Once again, we're very glad to accommodate those folks, we're glad to direct them any place that they need to go to get their answers if we can't do it for them. And last, and something that we're very proud of, is the fact that many other units, counties in counties from both North Carolina and South Carolina call our code enforcement unit to help them establish their own code enforcement unit designed very similar to the way that, that we operate. The number of, the numbers up on the screen, the most important number that you will see are the percentage of owner abatement. When you look at the overall percentage of ninety-four percent, that is for nuisance cases, junk vehicles, demolitions, every case that we have totaled. But the total of the ninety-four percent is for demolitions only. That is a very, very key percentage that we'll go into a little bit later as we go on. If you take that ninety-seven percent and you look at it from this fiscal year, every percentage point translates to eight thousand dollars, one way or the other, either spent by the taxpayer or saved by the hard work that the folks do in code enforcement to keep them from having to pay for these abatements. When you're doing a comparison, you always want to have a good benchmark to compare yourself against. We always like to have a high bar to compare our unit with. The benchmark city, of course, that we use is Concord. It was the first one in the state to, to put their code enforcement within the confines of the police department. They have seven officers, whereas we're budgeted for five. And you can see that throughout the year, that the comparative number of demolitions that they have done compared to ours. They, up until this year, I don't have their numbers for this year because they haven't finished theirs either. They had one hundred and eleven demolitions, we had two hundred plus twenty-nine from this fiscal year. Again, the very important number up there is they averaged in two thousand fourteen sixty percent of their demolitions were owner-abated, whereas ours was ninety-seven percent. If you take that number again, the thirty-seven percent difference in it, we would have spent an additional two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars if we were at their level of owner-abatement compared to what we do. The reason why I bring that out is it takes substantially longer for us to assure that the owner abates their own problems, but we try everything that we can. We use every avenue that is available to us to make sure that that happens because we just do not feel the taxpayer is responsible for the neglect of individual owners. Just a simple graph showing what we just discussed, the, you can see from over the last seven years that we peaked in two thousand eleven, twelve with demolitions. The vast majority of that, of course, being residential. You can see down at the bottom in the blue are the city-abated portions. Everything that we've done this fiscal year has been a hundred percent owner-abated. This is something that's quite important as far as the time that is consumed by the unit itself. Commercial abatements are up substantially. We project that that will continue to go up. As you can see, almost every year, the trend continues to go up, that our commercial compared to our residential abatements are, are gaining. Once again, a little bit later, I'll describe why that is an issue. You can see that this is the commercial demolitions, not just the commercial abatements. But so far this fiscal year, we have eleven commercial abatements. We project that we will have three to four more of those before the end of the year. Every one of those abatements are owner-abated. When you look at the difference between a residential abatement that could be two to four thousand dollars in comparison to a commercial abatement that could be twenty, forty, sixty thousand dollars, we again need to assure that the owner is abating these issues, and we try everything that we can to do that. Not only is it a financial issue, but it's also an issue as far as the liability that the city would somewhat assume if we had to do those demolitions. And that relates to asbestos, CPA issues, legal issues, where there's a lot easier to hide information commercially through corporate entities than it is through residential. It's kind of a graph of last fiscal year compared to where we're at so far. It's very interesting that the percentages seem to stay about the same, whereas the proactive portion of it is about fifty percent of what we do. There has been, as you can see, the twenty-seven percent compared to seventeen percent last year. That indicates fire damage. There has been, that we have been involved in more fire issues where we have actually required demolitions of those structures. The important thing about that is that we're also seeing more cases where there is fire damage, where there is no fire or liability insurance. The people are either not carrying homeowner's insurance or commercial insurance. In that case, they have no incentive to demo the property, it's basically useless. So their initial intent is to walk away from the property and leave it as it is. We're very quick to address these issues and to assure them that going beyond just that piece of property is something that we're willing to do. A damage to fire damaged structure, of course, is a lot more hazardous and, once again, very detrimental to the community. This kind of, little bit comedic outtake on the hazards, simply because I wanted everyone to understand not only the hazards that the tenants and the occupants of structures face, but also the officers that go address those. As you can see, the person in the upper left-hand side, when you have a crime committed, people know they committed a crime, they expect to be arrested and they expect to suffer the consequences for that unless they're just none of this world. In what we deal with, folks don't really think they're doing anything wrong in most cases. They don't understand that they're not breaking the law, but they are breaking a code or an ordinance or some of their form of city ordinance that needs to be addressed, and they're not very happy with that. So when people call into us, the folks are predisgrondled when they're calling in a complaint because it's very dear and near to their heart that they've got an issue next door. And then when we go see the people next door, those folks are not happy because they really don't think that they're doing anything wrong either. So we try to be very diplomatic when we address that. The other thing is, a lot of the areas that we go into have issues such as airborne mold. There are some times that we go into places that other activities are going on that could be dangerous through respiratory transmission. The dog up the top, quite honestly, not to, a lot of things that we address in minimum housing issues are unbelievable as far as the unsanitary conditions. And a lot of that involves where they will let their animals stay indoors with them, never go outside to do anything, which they don't take care of themselves, so it's, it remains inside. That is quite a health hazard, and you'd be amazed at how many young kids are in that environment. When you have hoarders, when you have folks that have an absolute mess inside their home, a lot of times there are drug paraphernalia that are also in there. We have to be very careful about when we're going through these structures. Almost always, there's some form of infestation. And then we also have to get out and traipse around out in the woods a lot of times, and there's some things out there you don't want to get into. As far as nuisance goes, it's pretty straightforward. We do everything from tall grass. You can see that you have folks with trash and debris. In that particular case, you can also use land development code for property maintenance where there is no grass or anything in the yard. Also, some things that we can address through nuisance are some particular forms of demolitions. And in this particular case, we did handle this one through the nuisance code. Junk vehicles, surprisingly, junk vehicles are very difficult to describe to folks. The first thing when you have an issue with your neighbor is to call in and say he's got a junk vehicle next door and he wants to get it towed, and he wants to assure his neighbor that he's the one that informed us about it. And they always think that if it doesn't have a tag on it that it's a junk vehicle, and it's very difficult sometimes. These are not difficult to determine that they're junk vehicles, but sometimes it's hard to get across to those folks that that doesn't necessarily mean it's a junk vehicle. So immediately, they want to call city management or their councilman and inform them, "We're not doing our job." Minimum housing covers a lot of things. Minimum housing is on the top of our list, especially from life safety issues, which you can see there are tremendous amount of electrical problems, which are fire issues as well as shock issues, infestation. You have fire issues because of hoarding. And if, just to give you an idea of some of the ways that we're having to address certain issues to get them resolved, and so that you understand sometimes maybe when you get a call that we have not gotten to something immediately or that it seems like that we have ignored a situation. Sometimes what we do takes a little bit longer to resolve when everything is not black and white. And I'm just going to give you one quick example. We got a call about three weeks ago from CID in the police department, and there was a body, deceased individual that was face down, floating in a basement. Not sure why he was deceased, but we do know at that point in time that there was raw sewage in that basement as well as the flooded basement. When Officer Sigmund got to the house, he went out there immediately. There was live electrical wires that were actually dangling into the standing water in the basement. Of course, the body was removed. And it just so happened that the person that owned the house was an eighty-some-year-old lady, lived there most of her life. She didn't have the financial wherewithal to maintain her house. She didn't really have the knowledge to do the repairs that were necessary for it, and she did have some folks that were living in the house with her. And there was a resolution for that. Normally, we would post the house, we would basically condemn it, and there could be no more occupancy of the house. Or we could turn our back and walk away and say, "She owns the house, we're not going to do anything about it." But that would have put not only her life at jeopardy, but other people that were staying with her. So we're stuck. What do we do? We have to make a tough decision. Kent took the time at that point to contact people that he knew in the faith-based community. He convinced them to talk to other people and to not only rally a group to go over and help this lady resolve the issues, but they also took up donations to get some professional repair on the houses. And as of today, the basement has been pumped, it's been repaired, all of the things underneath the house have been repaired, and they're starting to work on the house upstairs to make it livable for this older lady that would have been basically put out of her house. And that just shows you that we try to go the extra mile to get things done and to do the right thing. It's not always possible to do that, and we're not always successful. But if you hear at times that you get a complaint that possibly we didn't get something resolved right away, we're trying to work every direction that we can to do so. That is an example of a good person and someone that knows what he's doing and very proud to be working with not only a person like that, but people like that. Graffiti, another one of these things that is like an innocent issue. You have a piece of property, somebody puts graffiti on it, you didn't do it, you didn't want it on there, and yet you have to abate the problem. It's one of those things that's contentious when we have to address it, but we get it taken care of. Commercial demolitions are something that are on the rise, as I've said, and one thing that with the number of folks that we have, a commercial demolition takes substantially more time than a residential commercial because it's a tremendous amount of background work that has to be done. You're dealing with virtually every agency in the county, the state, federal agencies, you're dealing with attorneys, you're dealing with banks, you're dealing with asbestos, hazmat issues, legal issues, financial responsibilities. And you really have to be very careful when you're doing this to dot all your i's. The last thing we want you to do is to get a report from us that we have neglected to see something. We're going to make mistakes. We try everything that we can, and these are very, very complicated. I brought this, this is, this is a file for one demolition, and this is not a bigger file. This is, and you can see the tremendous amount of paperwork that it takes, and most of these are legal documents, they have to go back and forth. And this takes a lot, it consumes a lot of time to do this. So as you see our commercial abatements go up, our time involved in each one of these goes up as well. Some of the notable ones that we've had this fiscal year, of course, is Southern Desk, the Joan Fabrics issue. We had to make some concessions with that, but I can tell you, if you want to see what that mess would have been, go to Drexel, look at what this same individual did up in Drexel, go look in Marion, go look in Morgington, go look in Statesville. He goes to each one of these places, and every one of those places are in litigation at this time, trying to get those resolved, and it is an absolute mess. We knew who he was when he came in here, we got on it immediately, and we stayed on him, and it got resolved, but it took, again, a lot of time and effort to get that done. The other thing, the SNW Chemical Plant, which is very near the Southern Desk Plant. And something that I got a call on this morning was Mama Town, which we have not given up on that. We are, we are continuing with that issue. That is a corporate mess, and there are approximately ten thousand dollars in fines as far as that particular case goes. case goes as well. You can see that Mama Town on the bottom. We do have vagrants in that, again, as of yesterday. Residential demolition, as we get more and more sophisticated with everything else, that's, in most cases, fairly benign, except for the fact of when we have so many heirs, when houses are abandoned and they become derelict in themselves, a lot of times, the house is owned by heirs. Those heirs are almost impossible to find. We do everything that the general statute requires us to do to identify these people, but this is one of the holdups that we're having now. We're trying to figure out new ways to address some of these issues. This is just kind of to give you an idea of where a good portion of these are. It's hard to see the yellow dots on that, so we kind of did a little 3D thing there with the flags. And that shows that the core of a lot of these demolitions are, of course, in the core structure of the city. Facts and trends. As I said before, we do a demolition every nine days. That's calendar days, and that has been for seven years. It's a pretty good record. It is projected that both nuisance and demolition cases will trend towards lower percentage of owner-abatement. And that comes from the fact that when you have out-of-town ownership, it's hard to attach liens or to get tax burdens on those folks. We have to figure out new ways to get them to assume that responsibility. Increase in abandoned housing calls related to vagrancy. The homeless, i.e. vagrancy, go hand in hand. And where, if they're not in a field or in the woods, they're wanting to get into these homes, that's very dangerous. It's hazardous, once again, from all different directions. We're seeing an increase of that. And those are some of the cases that we get on with priority. We do have an increase in the homeless complaint calls, and we address that through the property maintenance aspect. There was, the most recent one, 12 acres just got basically clear cut. The owner decided that at this point, it was time for him to make a move, both, it would be judicial for him to do so as well as financial. And he went ahead and cleared the property because of the homeless camp in it, and he is going to start some form of development on that property. Once again, an adverse problem caused some kind of revitalization. Complexity of cases, they continue to get more complex by the day. And that is, if you do not know business, if you don't know real estate law, if you don't know all the parameters of what these folks can hide and how they incorporate it and what they do, then you have made a mistake. And we have to be very professional when we're addressing these cases. We are very happy that many of the city departments use us to partner with them, to resolve issues, and to help them do their jobs better. Also, we do see, as I said before, that a commercial abatement will continue to increase. With that said, that's it for my presentation. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Segal.
I was under the assumption years ago that if an automobile was in your yard and it did not have a current tag on it, then it was a code violation. Is that, is that still true?
That is true from one aspect, is that that's from the land development code where you cannot park on an unpaved surface. You can have an untagged vehicle as long as it moves as it was intended on your property, as long as it's on a paved surface. Now, if it does not move and does not have a tag, then it is a junk vehicle.
Okay. But if it's on a paved surface and does not move...
It does not, if it, if it's on a paved surface and does not have a tag, that does not mean it's a junk vehicle. It has to meet one of the other criteria. And that could be that it does not move as it was intended, that it is, creates such an unsightly mess that it is detrimental to the property of others. There's a list of five criteria that we go by.
Explain doesn't move like it was intended.
That means if it has flat tires.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, if it's got a dead battery and the guy can't get in it and start it up and move it. If the engine doesn't run.
Okay. But you're in charge of following those leads up if, if there is a car like that, right?
We, we are at this time. We, I can't remember exactly when it was, years or so ago, that we changed over from parking on unpaved services to the code enforcement unit because it just seemed right that we would start enforcing that as well. So that's one of the issues that we started addressing in the last year or so.
Since you said commercial is going to be taking sort of the lead on this rather than residential, and that seems to take a lot more time, is there any way to speed up that process to keep the kind of momentum going? Because it's, it's made such a difference in areas of Hickory with what you're doing, and I hate to see it slow down, flipping to more commercial, them taking more time. Is there anything that can be done?
There, there is. We realize that when we do it, we may bog down the legal department. We would need more advice and more help, and we hesitate to go there unless we absolutely need to. But it would also be good to have a conversation, maybe at another time, that we would have a little more time to do so. Because if we have some help from the top down, you as the, as the council can do a lot of things through general statute to expedite some of these issues. And whereas when we push it from the bottom up, sometimes we get stuck in the middle. So there are ways that we can continue to do this, and we're always looking for those avenues to, to try to keep one step ahead of, of those folks.
Well, if there are avenues, then I think we need to explore them.
You know, the, I know probably everybody's got their experience with phone calls. I think I've got a call from that woman that he showed, something like that. I know I got hung up on, cause I always tried to talk to her.
I doubt, she called me after she got mad.
Yeah, okay.
She was still active.
I want to tell you what, that, that this crowd, Bobby and, and his group do just a fabulous job. And they are so, in a, in a world where, you know, it sounds like the model of the other city you were showing might be, well, we, we're the ones with the rules, we're the enforcers, we're going to go in and boom, you know, you're going to comply. And that's not been, not been their strategy. And I see it in, I have a case in my ward, somebody that's well-known to code enforcement. And, you know, in this case, it's a, it's a homeowner that is, because of some personal issues, really is, violates the land development code and nuisance things. It's not really, I don't necessarily think, willful. Gosh, I think Bobby knows who I'm talking about. And you say, somehow you solved the problem. I saw it last, within the last couple of weeks, right there on Fifth Avenue. That, that got, that got fixed, and it looked like, I was thinking, there's a, there's a, it's a no-win situation. So thanks for the work you do there.
Yeah, all of the folks, and, and as I've said, I couldn't be more proud of them. They're all professional. They all know, they're business-minded, they have a good sense of community, and they're very eager to do the right thing. And from the police department, our PAC commitment, they live by that continually. And I know that one thing that I ask from you is that we're always afraid to fail, and we're afraid for complaints to come to you about us because that is something from our personal makeup that we, is just unacceptable to us. And we just hope you understand that we live in a world of complaints, and that is going to happen.
One quick question. I'd just like to know, what is the caveat, for lack of a better word, to get these owners to abate those nuisances? 97% love it compared to what the average was, 60%? What's the, the thing that you do to keep that number so high?
Other than, I guess, your manner that you do it.
We, we're, we're willing to go talk to them face-to-face. We don't just send letters. We, we go explain things to them, and we communicate, and we take that time. And quite honestly, on a daily basis, when you're dealing with conflict, that does take a toll on the individual, but it also breeds success. And we found that by not just sending a letter and somebody ignoring that letter and then it going through the process, that if they have to talk to someone face-to-face, it's a little harder to say no. And when they understand why you're asking them to do it, it's harder for them to say no. So we just make it a point to do that as much as humanly possible, if we can find those folks. And if not, we also know the law. We know how to convince them to do it financially if they don't want to do it through, you know, their civic responsibility.
So Hickory provides better community service in that situation?
I think we do a pretty good job.
That would be it. Thank you.
I think you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next department report. Wanted to ask council to consider your calendar for July. Traditionally, council has not met the week of July 4th. Of course, July 4th, or the meeting of the week of July 4th, July 4th this year is on a Saturday, which means typically you would cancel your July 7th meeting. As we guys are looking, the clerk and I have the calendar, recognizing you have five Tuesdays in June, that would put you over a month before you would meet on July 21st. Just trying to conduct the public's business in an efficient fashion. We suggested maybe you move your July 21st meeting to the 14th. I, you know, obviously I don't know this far in advance if it's going to happen in the future, but it just kind of seemed like a prudent thing to do, so just bring that to you for your consideration.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be able to do that. I mean, and of course, it'll be advertised and noticed properly and all that. That's the, within the, 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 the board. I'm going to prove it with the schedule change.
Motion by William, strength by Zara Rockley, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those know, that's it now. Thanks for being here.
Hey, break. This is...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...